Good evening and welcome to the planning board meeting of Tuesday, January 17th. These meetings are recording, recording, excuse me. I'll take a motion for the minutes. Motion by Joe, seconded by John. Any discussion on the meetings? Hereditary none? All in favor? Four in favor, one abstention, the abstention being myself. We have a 7:01 public hearing. Karen, whenever you have an opportunity.
The application of R and D Management Corporation for special permit approval regarding a 20 percent reduction in required off-street parking at 120-128 Midway Street. Accessory map, 43 block 0 lot 95D IB zone.
There are, excuse me, a few, what is it? Correlation to this application. Mike, I'll let you go over your concerns, but first we have one from the highway department. I've reviewed the above-mentioned site plan and offer the following. The northwest corner of the property has a stream running into a culvert that runs underground through the parking lot and exits across Beaver Street. At the entrance of the culvert, there is no gate and is allowing debris to enter the drainage system on the parking lot. The wing walls are in rough condition and should be rebuilt. This has been the source of many complaints in past years, either from the hotel north of the property and 120-128 Midway Road. Another area of concern is the southwest corner of the property. The brush and trees have not been maintained and have caused site issues for vehicles exiting the neighboring buildings. There is a future bus stop planned for the east side of the property along Beaver Street. I would recommend a bus shelter be built in the area specified by the MR, excuse me, MWRTA and Transportation Committee. All rope opening permits and trench permits must be obtained at the Milford Highway Department. The water company writes contractor must meet all Milford Water Company prior to starting any water line installations.
That's just their standard letter.
Yeah, I'm not going to sit here and read about their standard language.
I thought they stopped that.
They resurrected it. Commission on Disability, the commission would like to acknowledge applicants' responsiveness to MCOD concerns expressed during previous reviews of the site plan. As a result, MCOD concerns are limited to the following. Accessible parking stalls depicted below are currently planned to be adjacent to a raised landscape island. General?
What's that?
Both of these have been addressed.
They've both been addressed?
Yeah, if you want to just skim over them.
Continue to the second page. Has that been addressed, Larry?
Yes.
Has detail two and three been addressed?
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry? That was the Commission on Disability. Mike, if you'd like to, if there's any of your concerns that have not been met, I should say.
Yeah, no, my report just reflects that. I limited to the amendment because the site has recently gone, you know, under review and approval through this planning board for quite some time. So the change as the applicant will go through is probably the addition of a drive-through. So I limited my review to that, didn't get into all the technical drainage and things of that nature. That already was reviewed and approved recently.
Okay.
We met with the applicant. They revised the plan. This plan reflects Larry and mine's comments during the informal meeting, so I recommend approval.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Antonelli.
For the record, Joseph Antonelli, on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight is the applicant's principal, Al Rossi, who you've met before from the prior hearing. Steve Schrannad, who is going to be the project engineer on this, and Mike Pompey, who is our outside traffic consultant. We're here tonight, obviously, bringing in an amended site plan because there are some changes. I know there's been a lot of questions about the look of the buildings and identification of tenants. Some of the tenants have been identified in the newspaper, and we can confirm for you that Stop &amp; Shop is actively coming to this site. We have begun the process of applying for the demolition permits for the main building, which is, as you see on the right of the plaza. That's a detailed process that has to be done pursuant to Massachusetts Building Code. So we've met with John Erickson last week, and we hope to get moving forward on that within the next week. And then followed up with building permit applications to begin for the facade reconstruction of the buildings. Perhaps I should show you the facade of the building, that is, the Stop &amp; Shop building first, and so you get a look at it from right in front. So that's obviously this view here. I think you can, the camera can pick that up, so I'll get out of the way or try and hide you. But this is where Stop &amp; Shop is going to be. That's a 65,000-foot tenant. We have been in current negotiations with two tenants to fill in the rest of this building.
Joe, excuse me, would it be fair to conclude that that was tenant A was Stop &amp; Shop?
The tenant A is now Stop.
Is the entrance to Kmart.
Is now Stop &amp; Shop, and that is the Kmart entrance. That's correct.
Just for clarity purposes, that may not understand.
The primary reconstruction of the building is going to take place on the far side, on the Beaver Street side, but fundamentally, the rest of the plaza will be looking, as you see it now, the building has remained. Again, this is, hopefully, these tenants will join on very soon. This is the existing building, which shows a smaller retail and office space. We have a lot of interest, actually, for small office users. Then we have an existing retail, and then, as you know, this was the Bugaboo with two other retails. Then this is the new building that is proposed for construction that has been approved under the prior site plan relative to location, drainage, design, everything. And this will, this is the building that will be occupied by a tenant that's requiring a drive-through, which is part of, we're in here for tonight, was the amended site plan. And a lot of effort has gone in, and much thanks to your staff on helping us work out how best to access the last spot on this building, giving us the most queuing area possible. And then we're providing an escape aisle outside that could also serve double purpose if someone needs to get a delivery, so they can make foot deliveries through the dedicated aisle for the drive-through. We've redone some of the landscaping and actually increased the amount of green space on the property. And at the same time, part of this hearing is a special permit hearing. We're requesting a special permit based on the fact that we're going to have six users. Now, users were identified to you before in the site plan, one of which was the gym, and that was a specific user, and the gym is no longer there. But we've added in the restaurant with the drive-through, and thankfully, your zoning bylaw creates a specific use and calls it a specific use, and that would become our sixth use, replacing the gym. So we have, I think we have a very unique situation with shared parking over the entire plaza to blend in with retail, restaurant, the salon that we have there, office slash professional, a bank, and the newly-added restaurant with drive-through, giving us the six specific users. Now, while we're asking for a 20 percent reduction in the amount of parking spaces, we are actually providing enough parking with the reduced, with the increased park, with the increased green space to re, the actual request, or the actual crest is 20, but the actual number of spaces is that we'll be have, we'll be within 14 percent of what would be required without a parking reduction. The board had already granted a 10 percent reduction, so we're increasing it by four, but the bylaw creates a request for 10 or 20, so we're asking for the 20. We think it can be, it's justified, and we think that this is part of what is absolutely necessary in attracting tenants to a small plaza. In the ideals of today's commercial retail world, this is a small shopping center.
Right.
And in order to have a successful shopping center that is small, we need a major tenant with food, and I think that is the real reason we haven't been here in almost a year. It's because driving this whole economic development, redevelopment of this parcel was to secure a tenant, a long-term tenant, and a large long-term tenant that would be a fruit processor, and that's Stop &amp; Shop. So we're very pleased. We believe that spins off the rest of these requests and will allow us to track the same, the kinds of tenants that will fit in, where you will find people sharing, using their parking space for one purpose, obviously, to park their car, but going to different retail establishments for other purposes while we're there. I'm going to let Steve Schrannad talk about the changes to the site plan and how things have worked out, and if there are any specific questions relative to the application, then we'll obviously try and pick the person best suited to answer it. So Steve, if you can go over those.
Sure. Thank you, Joe. For the record, my name is Steve Schrannad, project manager with Allen &amp; Major, where the site engineers for this project. This project had already been approved several, a year, a year and a half ago, and what we've done is we've made some modifications to that original site plan. I'll work my way across the site. On the large building, the former Kmart building, the Stop &amp; Shop has requested a full loading dock, so a portion of the building will be removed to make a loading dock with a depressed dock for them. So that is a major modification, and this portion of the old Kmart building, the old Garden Center, as it was, is being removed. So this whole area will have a new look on this corner. At the same time, we've put in a loading dock similar to the Stop &amp; Shop one, flipped over to be able to deal with this. Currently, the two loading docks are on the back of the building, which created a lot of issues. One faced one way, the other faced the other way. This way, they're both out of the way, give us a little bit more room, and the reason why we could get a little bit more green space is because we were allowed, because of these docks being removed, we could pull the edge of the pavement over a little bit. So we've got some more green space at the back. Not a whole lot, but enough to be able to say we've got some more green at the back. This portion of the site is essentially as you saw it before, except for a couple of comments that we've addressed based on Mr., the town planner's comments. One of them is up in this corner here. This originally was a 6,000-square-foot single building that was shown on the original plan. It is now three 2,000 square footers, one of them being a, an office space, the other two being retail. To provide access all the way from Beaver Street over to here, this parking bay used to extend all the way across. We've opened this up a little bit, add a little bit of green space in between it, so that anybody who's coming into this center can now come, instead of having to drive all the way around to get to the exits, a straight shot through. This driveway entrance lines up a little bit better. We've provided a little bit more storage for vehicles exiting the site at this point. This was the old Bugaboo, and originally, that was shown as one tenant, somebody going in. It's now three smaller tenants, one of them being a restaurant with outdoor seating located at the fire end over here. We, when we put the drive-through at this corner, because you always have to have it so that the driver's side is up against the building, the circulation was around the back of the building and in. We had, the drive-through we shared with the access aisles, we were informed that that doesn't work. So what we've done is we've taken all the services, the dumpster locations, the loading and unloading zones, from against the building, put them to the other side of the drive-out. So that if somebody were to pull in for, you know, to go through the drive-through window, they had a clear lane to come along against the building, actually, five feet off the building, because all the doors will open out, so it will be doorways with pads and ballads to protect anybody coming out of the building. They would be able to stay close to the building. Anybody making a delivery or decides, I'm not going to wait that long for coffee or whatever it is they're standing in line for, they can scoot out, get around, and be able to get across. That was the big issue of making it separate. So now there is a separate drive aisle for the drive-through and separate for the service lanes and for the escape lane. So all of that happens in the back here. We've added a little bit more green up in here. We've decided that we weren't going to retrofit the old sewer lift station, we're going to put a new one in. It just makes sense with all these new tenants, it's all new. So we're now showing the pump station back over in here to function as the old one did, except hopefully a little bit better. So in a nutshell, same project, same gross lease area on the project, just redistribution of it and a little bit cleaner, I think, in the way that it'll operate. In the site plans, we've provided truck turning radiuses, so you can see how all the vehicles, fire vehicles can get in, get out, essentially the same as before. I think the big thing is this area in here, so you've got a straight shot through and the, how the, the drive-through works for this new retail building.
Just as a point, one of the questions that I had when we were doing this, you now have outdoor seating. This is not something that, this is coming, again, this is tenant-driven, that the small restaurant, users that are interested in the facility want to be able to have places where people can sit outside. Those tables and chairs are designed onto specific areas to not block sidewalks and entranceways. They are also included in the number of seats that are casting our parking requirements, so that while we're asking for this reduction, you know, as a, as a longtime Milfordian, I can tell you, I don't think there are much more than 90 days a year, if there are that many, that people are going to choose to sit outside on the intersection of Beaver Street and 109 to have a sandwich. So while the tenants-
I think you're shooting high at 90, Joe.
I think the tenant, I agree. But I think that, you know, that includes with global warming. But, so I think that even though we're asking for that reduction-
They're not including 90 consecutive days.
Right. I don't think there are going to be too many days when that's going to be an impact on that parking lot. But again, that is, that's driven by the tenant of today.
Any more to your presentation?
Nope.
Before I overstep to the board, can you just, in terms of your six defined uses, can you just identify the bank? Bank is-
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Because the last time you were here, I don't think that we qualified the bank, at least I know I didn't qualify. The stand-up ATM machine as a, as a true bank, it's not. So I still struggle with that.
I can tell you that there's a bank inside the Stop &amp; Shop building also.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
So there is, that user is on the site as a user.
Okay. That makes sense.
Thank you.
Because that is not a bank.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And one other quick question that I think will probably perhaps be asked in correlation to your reduction, assuming that at least we know one of your users is a grocery store that we obviously know utilizes carts. I don't see that anywhere on your plan, have you shown areas defined that cart returns would be, would be shown on that? And I just, again, it may be addressed later on, but I just figured I'd throw, no, no, you don't have to just add, I just figured I'd throw it out there.
No, that loses parking space.
It absolutely utilizes parking space. But hold on, I want to be fair and open it up to the board. Members?
That, that was my first comment, is we've already given them that reduction to begin with. We didn't, and probably wouldn't have asked, but I, but I, I don't think this meets the intent of what we thought we were going to do to get a 20 percent reduction. I think we were, we were questioning before with 10.
The users.
With the users. It's a reason why we went to special permit as part of this, and to me, this doesn't meet my sniff test to get over the fact of getting a 20. I mean, writing down Office 2000 and saying, okay, I can get 50, 50 less parking spaces. That wasn't my idea of what we would see in order to get to a 20 percent. I was more comfortable when there was a gym there, because the users tend to be early morning, late in the day, and now we've got strict retail throughout, and the amount of over-usage, to me, would be much closer to the 10 percent. So to me, this, this is clearly a 10 percent. There's a significant amount of parking that people aren't going to want to use because of the setup that's here. We've got significant parking behind the building and on the side of the building that people aren't going to want to use. It's great to show it on a plan, but no one's going to go back there. No one goes behind the Coles Plaza now, no one goes on the side of the Coles Plaza now. And to me, there's way too much retail here for the area that people are actually going to park in. So I, I for one can't be in favor of a 20 percent reduction based on this plan. So in terms of site, the other stuff, the other changes, I have no issue with, they're fine, but in terms of the parking and the special permit requirement, which is what the first thing that we're actually here for, there's, there's no way that I could be in favor of that.
My question was the carriage, where they're going to put the carriages and how many areas is there going to be for the carriages?
Yeah.
I mean, they're not going to go bumping in everybody's car. So that's not on your plan, is that correct?
It is, it is not on the plan yet. We're waiting something from Stop &amp; Shop themselves. Generally, they'll, they'll have about a dozen spaces that they'll take up to put their cart corrals in, and-
Well, 20 now.
Yeah, but here's the other, the one fundamental problem that you have is you're looking at Stop &amp; Shop solely. In correlation to the other retail that you have, I don't know if those are driven by carts as well. We have no knowledge, because we don't know who we're talking about. That's one of the fundamental problems, that it's very challenging us, for us to guess when we don't know. That's the problem. So when you ask for a reduction, if I, for all I know, you can get two other retail people in there that also have carts and also going to have five or six parking spots removed because of that. I don't know.
Well, Stop &amp; Shop alone, because I went down there, you're losing over 20 spaces between, between cart locations and the fact that they run Peapod, where pickup is there and they, and they show-
And then they designate-
So they designate those spaces as part of it. Well, the parents, I can take that as those people were going to be down there. But when you try to run, when you try to run Peapod out of there, they're really people that are coming in and going out. You lose those spaces as part of our retail count, which is why I can live with the 10 percent, because I believe that we have that type of reduction. But when you go to 20 percent is your reduction, and you may be at 14 or whatever, you're asking for 20, Joe, and I don't know what the next thing is coming in, we have to deal with what we're asking for. Is, is that between that, by the time you put the carriages out there, by the time they put Peapod locations, we don't know, as Pat said, what the others are. I just think that's way too much. I, I, I'm not comfortable with it.
Any other questions from the board?
I just wanted to, there is a bank in Stop &amp; Shop like there is now.
Correct.
Yes.
It's been identified on the floor plan.
Is it? The ATM, is the ATM on the way coming in?
The ATM is-
Right there.
Up along Midway Road.
Okay.
Yeah, it's always been the same spot.
In that same spot.
I think it equates perhaps two parking spots, maybe.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
I, I don't, because I think the corrals actually open up parking spaces rather than to take them up. Because if you didn't have the corrals, there'd be cots all over the place.
You're mentioning your cars.
Well, I don't disagree with you. You definitely need the corrals, but I'd like to, I would have liked to see them reflected on the plan.
No, I would like to see them on the drive-through.
And the other thing, like I said, I just struggle with what other potential retail that they may have in there that are also going to be utilizing carts. I don't know these things. Dollar Tree, yeah, I think they have some. Again, I don't know.
They have carts.
I don't know what they do with them.
Most of them do now.
They're leaving in the middle of the park.
This isn't like all of it, I don't mean to pick on them, but you get a quarterback if you return it. If not, you know, and again, that's the problem. It just, it's very challenging to figure out how this is all going to actually work out when we just don't have enough information, and I'm just, obviously, just trying to put the pieces together.
Because I know about the traffic.
The other question I have is, did you address or plan to address the concerns of the highway surveyor?
Those were all vetted out during the first site plan process.
They just haven't been addressed?
We haven't gotten, we haven't started construction.
I don't know. I'm just, I'm just asking for clarity purposes.
No, there's been none.
Well, Joe just answered it, they'll get to it.
Yeah, but the site has already, the line of sight issue with the building just west of this on 109, they cleaned that up before the first-
Right.
-site plan was even approved, because it was brought up during discussions. So they've removed that shrubbery, so there, there isn't a line of sight problem there. They also removed shrubbery up at the northeast corner of this site along Beaver Street, around the corner, which would be behind the Kmart, the Kmart building where the Garden Center used to be. They've removed all of that, and it was determined during the last review that that off-site drainage inlet was just that, it was off-site. It wasn't anything that they could legally do anything about, and the question was raised whether or not, in fact, the town-
That's right. I think, I think you had to come, I think you're right. I think you had to come back.
I pursued that outside of the hearing. Right.
I think you're right. I think we made that a condition the last-
I was a little surprised when I saw it a lot at this time.
Hey, listen, hey, come on, it was worth a shot.
It is.
Worth it's good. You said yes originally, then you came back and bought it.
We actually came back because we found we couldn't get any help from anyone else. We did pursue it.
Like the budding property owner.
Correct. So I mean, that's fine.
Can you see it?
Yes, babe? Babe, babe, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, again, my biggest thing is this is not Virginia, and we got to put snow somewhere.
Oh, yeah, that's the other.
And if we have some kind of a, from the developer, where it goes.
There should have, I believe there was a snow plan in the plant set, or it's shown where the, the snow could be stacked.
I get the small grid.
Yeah, I don't think they have the-
I remember seeing it on the previous reduction, but I don't necessarily see it on this one. Why you look, Lena has a question.
Yeah, I have a question. The last time when you were here, there was a fence that was placed up there by the cemetery, Sagrada Cemetery. And when you were here last time, you mentioned the fact that you people were going to replace that fence, and along with that, if I remember correctly, because they were going to push the snow up in that area, that, now, I'm just trying to remember how that worked, but I thought, I'm going to use Pat's name, because I think Pat mentioned something like a wall, because if you put the snow up against that, it just will all cave in. Do you remember that, Pat?
What I remember is telling him that they were not to put snow over in that, in that area, and I think that's what they had agreed to.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough room.
No, I think they agreed to-
So I was just wondering about that fence.
If you recall, it's supposed to be repaired and, and-
But there's no fence there now. Fence is gone.
No, but the fence is on the plan.
Right. Yeah, I definitely see, you could-
Is it on? I couldn't see it.
Well, it's very small print, but you can definitely see there's something about a fence. I just can't see if it ends, stops, or completed. I can't read exactly what it says.
So am I correct in saying that will be there?
Yes.
All right.
There was a snow removal plan, it's, snow storage plan, I'm sorry.
Let me just, let me just kind of sum this up. I guess we have two options at this point. Either we can continue this meeting, or we can vote on it. I think it would perhaps benefit you if we continue it, but obviously, it's up to you.
Continue it till your next meeting?
Yes.
So that would be to make a determination whether you can vote yes, no, or maybe put something else in? I mean, Mr. Caligione brought it up, he said, he said, I asked for 20, you already gave us 10. This is a special permit hearing, so-
Well, it's certainly a special permit hearing, Joe. I, I think that you have the ability to perhaps come back and perhaps with additional information that you can provide to us, that in theory would give us a better idea of the elimination of parking spots, and then we could perhaps better calculate your needs based on your request of 20 percent reduction. That would be my hope.
For the summary from our traffic consultant, for that specific issue?
I don't know, and again, I'm not pressing you, but I don't know if you guys have a better handle of perhaps some of the other retail uses that you may be attracted, that may, that you may be able to attract. And again, I'm not asking for names, but in correlation to how it's going to line up on this plan and determine how much parking is actually going to be reduced, and then in correlation to where the snow is going to go in the winter and so on and so forth. I think we're trying to sum the reduction of your request in making sure that there's still adequate parking at the end, I think is what we're trying to give you the benefit of. Now, if you don't think that that's- Or maybe see a different mix in terms of the number of professional office-type uses that are in the plaza as opposed to just one of the smallest tenant spaces available to count as a, as a use to get the reduction. I don't know whether that, changing that mix or not, Mike.
Well, one of the things that I would like, if we're going to continue, I would also like to continue to consider that, you know, to the extent that we can justify a specific number to you that is not 20, let's assume that we can justify, we come back with this analysis and can justify you that a 15 percent reduction is in order, or a 14 percent reduction is order, as shown in the plan, then I think that would also give us time to get opinion from town council. I personally believe that in a special permit process, this board has some latitude. You can impose conditions, you could grant relief, you could deny certain forms of relief, and perhaps we could find a number that's, you're comfortable with and incorporate that.
And I think that's my goal, and that's why I would encourage you to continue this And I think that's my goal, and that's why I would encourage you to continue this to the next meeting.
I, I don't, yeah, I think we, we would, based on what you had said at fourteen, I, to a certain extent, I was, I was viewing the plan at fourteen, because at the end of the day, we approved the plan. You're not gonna be able to change that in terms of.
Correct.
Have or haven't. It would've been fourteen. The fact is, you have to ask for twenty because that's what the bylaws, I understand that. The problem I had was fourteen plus, I'm taking away twenty, thirty more spaces because I know that you're gonna have corrals out there. I know you're gonna, Stop &amp; Shop's gonna wanna put them. I'm pretty sure the other tenants are, you know, I know Peapod delivery is going to have them, and none of that was taken into account. I really think I'm giving you sixteen, seventeen. Tell me I'm wrong or not, but that's what I was doing. I was not comfortable with that. Would I be comfortable with fourteen with all those? Maybe. I, I don't know what the right number is. I don't really know right now. But, but certainly fourteen, knowing all those other things need to be taken into account, knowing that, that, you know, there really probably isn't enough snow storage in there that's shown based on the landscaping and stuff to, to not lose more parking spaces was very difficult for me to do.
And, and we're over in our landscaping, and so maybe we reduce the landscaping to add a parking space. I, I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know that. I, I, I will say that, you know, my, my client has, has the other side of this dilemma, and this is not an argument. Is, is that you get potential tenants come in who wanna know if they can come in, do you have all of your approvals? And our answer is, was before, yes, but then we've got new tenants who drive our parking in a different direction. So we gotta try and lock that up, and, and we tried to, we tried to do that this time with, we're looking at it both sides. Now, Joe, you bring up a good point about the corrals, whether they take up some spots and stuff. And to the extent that a continuance for two weeks would be beneficial to all parties, we continue to move forward. I think you recognize the efforts that my client has made relative to this particular plaza. We went over the economic aspect of, in the past, of eliminating Kmart from the building to begin with so that we could come here with a rehabilitation of what has not been the most attractive plaza in the area. We believe that when we're done, it will be the single best plaza in the area, and we'll continue to work in that, uh, towards that goal. So I would respectfully request that we come back in two weeks.
Can we take a recess?
Could we take a recess to slide somebody else in, or?
You could suspend the hearing.
I can suspend the hearing, and then I'll just move on. Well, it may be six or seven, but yeah, I'll suspend the hearing, and then I'll continue on the agenda. And when I see you come back, we'll put you right back on. Thank you. All right. There are no eighty-one Ps. We have a amended site plan for seventy-six East Main Street. The applicant requests an amended site plan approval to establish used car sales as an additional use on the subject property. This will be in addition to the auto and truck repair use currently occupying the site. Auto sales use are allowed by special permit in the CB zone. A special permit was granted by the ZBA on November tenth, two thousand and sixteen, subject to the site plan approval. There are no additional, no additions being proposed to the existing building. The proposed used vehicle sales display area will not extend beyond the existing payment. The landscaping plan is being proposed to restore the previous landscaped area that had been recently removed. In addition, the southerly driveway entrance along Mead Street will be closed to reduce traffic conflicts.
Thanks, Bob.
In the area, no paving or other use except for landscaping will be located on the portion of the property that is subject to the activity and use limitation as per MGL's, uh, C twenty-one E subsection six and three ten CMR four forty point zero zero. All other applicable zoning requirements appear to be met, therefore recommending approval is Larry, provided that no more than twenty-three unregistered vehicles be maintained on the premises at any one time. And provided that the existing crushed stone installed with, when the landscape was removed, be replaced with grass and/or bark mulch. Is the decision from the zoning board, which also limits the, to twenty-three unregistered cars. Mike, I'll let you take care of yourself. Uh, the highway department has, um, the only concern is the southerly entrance is to be closed. The replacement berm should match existing berm on Mead Street, side of the property between the street and the parking lot. The fire department has no, uh, concerns. The water company has no concerns. The building department has no concerns. Commission on Disability comment is limited to concerns that if spaces allocated to vehicle displays are reduced to where applicable, or excuse me, available parking exceeds twenty-five spaces from the current allocation, fourteen spaces, then the applicant will need to add at least one additional accessible parking space with access aisle in order to remain compliant. All yours, Bob.
Okay, so as, as you said.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, Mike, my apologies. Mike?
I, uh, my report just references the southernmost entrance or curb cut that exists there now along Mead Street is being closed. And it's, you know, somewhat of a benefit to the traffic flow. I recommend approval of the site plan. The site's developed. Minimal, minimal improvements being proposed.
I hear. Sorry, Bob.
Okay, so this is the previous Midas Muffler Plaza. Uh, the, this is, this is a, um, sad day to see these cars going here because now I won't have any place to park when I gotta get my Oliver's order.
Oh.
I know it.
On the holidays. So, so anyways, the, uh, the applicant is proposing to have fourteen parking spaces here in compliance with the requirements for the use. And then, uh, he has a special permit or license to have twenty-three cars that will all be displayed in this area here. Landscaping was done in a previous iteration of this in the front, and basically it was just some, some white stone, landscaping stone that was placed there with, with no plantings. Proposal is to add plantings in those areas in these locations here and along the side. Plantings were originally shown a little bit closer to the road, but in this lo- in this location here, they've been pulled back. So you can see there's quite an extensive area here that's open space, and so that there was no intrusion by the plantings for people trying to get out of Mead Street, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't be hindered by any of the vegetation. The only outstanding issue from all the comments is, is Larry's comment regarding the landscape areas. The applicant is proposing to, uh, keep the, these, these crushed stone that he's placed there as, as ground cover, but supplemented with plantings like it would be beds is, you know, so, I mean, the, the thought process is that the, the crushed stone is, is really just a different form of a mulch or a landscape treatment. It's still there to, to prevent weeds and prevent, um, you know, it's, it's porous. It doesn't, doesn't prohibit infiltration, and it, it just, uh, it's.
Bob, what type of plantings are you proposing, or is he proposing?
There's a whole list here of trees. There's one per twenty-seven feet.
I know, but my print is so God bless it's small.
There's flowering pears for the trees. There's Hatfield yews. Uh, there's Stuart azaleas, and there's such enti junipers all being proposed within, within this. In the landscaped area.
So you're requesting that the stone be left in place?
Left in place and just be, just be, uh, added to with the plantings.
The, uh, the prior landscaping was removed, uh, uh, creating a zoning violation when, uh, the current applicant acquired the site. So his intention was to not have any landscaping there at all. So, and the bylaw is pretty clear about what constitutes a landscape buffer, uh, and it doesn't include, uh, just piling stone in.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it, is that white, is it white?
Yes.
Plants will die anyways.
Yep. You concluded, Bob?
I'm done, yes, thank you. Questions from the board?
I recommend approval as submitted with no more than twenty-three unregistered vehicles.
And to follow along the bylaws specific to the plantings under some.
Exactly.
Sorry, there's someone else.
I just have one, one other question. Did, did you, is the curb matching the existing?
Yes, there's, there's a note here saying match existing curb. It was added to the plan, yes.
It's an asphalt curb there now, I believe.
Yeah, I don't know what's, what's down there, and I guess the property line is right up against there. There's no sidewalk along that side.
No, I think it's on the opposite side.
It's actually on private property.
Yeah. So a motion by John to approve it with the stipulation not to exceed twenty-three unregistered cars and to replant the, uh, plantings per the, uh, bylaw.
Without the question.
Yeah, the bylaw is very specific, as you said to me, crushed stones don't qualify.
Is that without the crushed stone, right?
Yes, yes. A second by Lena. Any further discussion? Agreeing not? All in favor?
Right.
Propose to them. Thank you, Bob. Okay, we have a amended site plan for eighty-five South Bow Street. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to allow for a change of use on the subject property. The proposal is to operate a used car dealership on the site. In addition to general office use, the solar energy company and thirty-five hundred square feet of warehousing space occupy the site. Auto sale use are allowed by special permit in the IA zone. A special permit was granted by the ZBA on November tenth, two thousand and sixteen, subject to site plan approval. There will be no additions being, uh, proposed to the existing building. A new parking lot is to be added to the south of the building, and all unused curb openings along South Bow Street are to be closed. The used vehicle display area is to be limited to the northwest corner of the site. All applicable zoning requirements appear to be met. Larry approve, uh, excuse me, recommends approval, subject to no more than twelve unregistered vehicles to be maintained on the premises at any given time. It is a decision from the zoning board. From the highway department. South, uh, excuse me, South Bow Street was rebuilt in the summer of two thousand and sixteen. It was completed in November of sixteen. Work includes sidewalk, roadway, and drainage rebuilds. A section of sidewalk between the property and South Bow Street was temporarily hot-topped. I am recommending this se- section of sidewalk be taken out and rebuilt in concrete to be con- you keep doing that as I'm reading. To be consistent with the rest of the sidewalks on South Bow Street. Please be advised, there is a five-year mortuary on all new roads in town. No road opening permits will be issued on the South Bow side of the property. No digging will be allowed in the road. All other permit, uh, permit, road openings or trench permits must be, be, uh, obtained by the Milford Highway Department. The fire department, uh, writes, "The sixteen-foot fire lane does not meet minimum requirements as a fire lane. The proposed lane is probably pre-existing, and there is no means to widen it. At a minimum, I request a fire lane, no parking, tow zone signs be posted in addition to painting and striping on the road surface." Water company seems to be okay. Commission on Disability, "The route from the proposed handicap parking spaces and access aisle is a presumed accessible entrance, but the solar office appears to exceed AAB requirements in terms of slope. In addition, the route includes stairs. It is requested that details be added indicating that the handicap parking space and access aisle surface slopes are in conformity with AAB for, uh, five twenty-one CMR. It is further requested that route from the handicap parking spa- space and access aisle be made accessible in all characteristics, including slope, with the exclusion of the stairs. Uh, the HP signage is depicted at the head of the access aisle. It is requested the HP sign be shown at the head of the accessible parking space." Okay, Bob, or John, I'm sorry. Who wants it?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, my name's John Fernandez, Law Office at Twelve Main Street, representing Mr. Whitaker, who owns the property through an entity. He wasn't able to be here tonight. I only learned about the meeting today. But my understanding is that Karen Heldon have worked out the issues that have been reported, and Bob is going to discuss that in the site plan presentation.
Bob?
Thanks.
You worked out the ar- you seem confused on that statement.
No, I just, I just, you know.
He's just presenting.
So, um.
My understanding was they worked out?
This is, this is the former J-Cor. At one time, it was J-Cor before they moved over in here. Um, it's been a lot of little things since it was an oil.
Black Shaughnessy.
Yeah, right, yeah, right. It was the oil company way back. Their tanks are over here still, or were over here. So the proposal is, is, is a combination of warehousing, uh, car sales, you know, some more warehousing. There, there's gonna be, uh, several uses in here. Um, you know, warehouse, old office use, there's a administrative office. Uh, this could be a, a solar company looking to, to use part of the spaces. And then there's this area here for a display of, uh, automobile sales. Uh, there's an existing, there's an existing opening into the, into the property off of, uh, South Bow Street in this location here. We're just enhancing it a little bit. Um, proposing paving this area. It's, it's currently, it's a gravel parking lot. We're going to pave this, stripe it. Uh, we're gonna attenuate the stormwater runoff in a, with a, um, HydroWorks catch basin, which is gonna attenuate TSS removal, and then we're gonna recharge the runoff into a subsurface infiltration basin. We've done testing to show that we can, we can mitigate the, you know, the potential storm runoff. The, um, we've got, the, the intent is for the, for the handicap access is actually using the existing sidewalk and into the, to the entrance of the building, which is the office entrance is right here. So this is just the, this is the existing sidewalk here. These are all stairs, um, so access is gonna be down the existing sidewalk and into the building here in this location. Um, we have, we have shown signs along the rear or the side of the building where the fire lane is saying, uh, "Fire lane, no parking, tow zone." We've added these signs to the plan to, uh, address that issue. And, um, really, it's, you know, it's just a way to clean up this particular site. Make it, you know, get rid of the, the, the ISO that's in the back here that you can see against Railroad Street. Just, uh.
I think it's an ISO, Bob. I think they've actually cleaned it up pretty well.
Well, yeah, it used to be, it used to be pretty bad. When I first started with the, with the, with the Blair House, it was, it was pretty much a mess back there.
If they call it an ISO, I think would be a correct statement. I'm just trying to be fair.
There, there is some cleanup to do in the back, um, where some of the collection is around that warehouse.
No, but it looks a lot better than it did several years ago.
Absolutely. Mr. Whitaker, you know, purchased this building and has done a tremendous amount of work upgrading the building itself and, um, the outside of the building in terms of the signage. And we're here really because initially we got that, uh, special permit to allow for the used car sales as is allowed. And you can see the collection of cars up in the corner there. He agreed that it would be barrier'd by, uh, some decorative fencing from the, the sidewalk area, and, and all of the parking requirements in the back have been met so that that, they, there was a question about extending the parking, which he's agreed, uh, pavement, which he's agreed to do in the back. And I, I think it's a tremendous cleanup to the corner in the site.
I go by there a lot, and I ca- I could see the difference already. It, it really is.
So he, he runs his, his, um, I think it's called second generation solar out of there. I hope I'm not.
The solar.
I'm not, I'm not promoting the wrong company, but, um, he, he runs his solar company out of there and uses it as, as warehouse and, and, uh, his office, and the rest of the building is warehouse as well, other than the used car sales.
John, in terms of the handicap, was that addressed, or Bob, either one?
I, I.
Well, like I say, the, what we've shown here is we've got the handicap here. The sign is actually, yes, it, the sign is at the, at the end of the spaces.
What was it addressed to, uh?
And as far as the.
Satisfaction?
Well.
I'm just trying to, I, I'm just.
The existing, the existing, you know, the existing sidewalk is, is this way.
Because of the entrance. Where, where they looked at the entrance, where they made a judgment as to the entrance, you can't do that. You have to go down the side, you have to go down the sidewalk, so you can't get there.
You can't get there from any other location than come down the sidewalk.
Does your, uh, does your scope of work also include, uh, the sidewalk?
Yes, this is a note here saying, uh, it's gonna be a concrete walk as opposed to the asphalt that's there. Now, that asphalt will be replaced by a concrete walk.
Might I conclude, just so, because I, I, I got from his letter that you were doing to the end to, to Central Street. So can you just, can someone give me clarity on that?
I, I don't.
I, I, I took from his letter that he was expecting that you were gonna do right to Central Street, so I.
Well, that's, that wouldn't be my understanding of it, because the only thing.
I'm just looking for clarity, 'cause I'm not sure what he meant.
The only thing they hot-topped, um, as a concession to what was going on with this site being unfinished, was my understanding, at their request, was the entrance way.
Right, right here.
And it would be.
Okay.
Completely unfair to hold them responsible.
I have no idea. Again, I was just looking for, I was looking for clarity with what he was talking about.
I, I'm assuming he just meant that.
He's basically talking about between the property line, he said, as he said, between the property line and South Bow Street. This area in here was, 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 uh, temporarily hot-topped.
So you're, you're referring to the.
This area right in here.
The driveway.
Yeah, the driveway apron. The driveway apron. He wants it to be concrete.
Cause I get confused, cause I, as I drove by there, I did notice that the sidewalk was in fact asphalt.
Yeah, and that one little, yeah.
So.
Yeah, and that one little, yeah.
Yeah, the entire sidewalk was.
I guess I don't have a problem with, with perhaps approving it. I just would like clarity from him.
I also have a question. I guess I'm just looking at this, looking at the curb cuts and stuff. Is he comfortable with this? Because I don't know how you, how you pull those curbs and make this curb change without doing work in South Bow Street. I mean, I've never seen anybody that's been able to do that.
They coordinated this location when they, when they rebuilt South Bow Street.
So that curb cut, that curb cut matches, is correct?
As far as I know.
That's what was supposed to be coordinated at the time, Scott.
I'm just looking at the plan. It looks like the curb was extended and then we have a proposed vertical curb that's actually on South Bow Street on this plan. So that's why it's, it's got it as proposed.
Yeah, the drawing.
Proposed and it's not there, in which case I have an issue with him being happy. I mean, if he's happy with it, I, I don't have an issue with it, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, we get down there and then all of a sudden, you know, he's saying, "I'm not giving you a, an opening permit because you need to do it." It just bothers me that we'd approve it with a.
That would be one other thing we could add to the list to verify with Scotty. So, I mean, I.
Yeah, otherwise I don't have an issue with it.
Subject to those things. I'll talk to Scotty tomorrow, Mike and I can, and get that straightened out and they can fix the plan and then Pat can sign it.
Yeah, and my understanding when we were in here the last time was that it was all about that curb cut opening, that the concession was made. And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, relative to the way that is worded, but there would be no reason to have left that as pavement all the way down as a concession to this project because there was no work being done in the sidewalk other than at that simple location right there, that single location. So I'm not sure why work was done.
I get that.
I'd like to see a note on the plan stating that the concrete sidewalk would only be done in that area again.
Like I said, I don't think I, I don't think any of us have a problem unless it's on the questions. I don't think anyone has a problem approving the plan subject to just clarity on both the curb cut and in correlation to the, to the sidewalk. I just, you, you read his letter and it's very specific in terms of no road opening for five years and so on and so forth. So obviously.
As to that location with the curb.
We don't certainly want to be in conflict with anyone, so.
And even if we all agreed with what was said, the plan doesn't show it. So they need to fix the plan anyway.
So I'll take a pleasure, I'll take a motion from Lena.
To.
To approve the amended site plan.
Approve the amended site plan.
Seconded by Babe. Subject to.
Yeah, subject to the change in the curb cut?
Well, subject to.
Clarification.
Clarification on the curb cut and.
And the concrete sidewalk.
And the concrete sidewalk and then obviously making the plan correlate.
The handicap notes.
And the handicap notes as well. And making the plan correlate to that.
The concrete sidewalk, the new handicap, and what else?
The curb cut.
The curb cut.
Any further questions?
I just wanted to hear that one more time.
Approval subject to clarity on the curb cut.
Okay.
The concrete.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk and the handicap.
Okay, all right.
Any further discussion?
No.
Bearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Antonellis.
Chairman, we respectfully request continuance to your next agenda so that we can address some of the board's concerns relative to snow storage, cockerels for the retail amendments, and the overall specific reduction in parking.
Okay, so I'll take a motion from John, seconded by Joe, to continue this meeting until February 7th.
That's the next one?
It should be, yes.
Wow, February 7th.
Is that enough time for you, Joe?
Yes, that's more than enough.
The time to be established by.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I have a hearing on that night.
Any other?
We have a public hearing on that night already, so, not that, not that it's a big deal. We have a public hearing that night.
Any further discussion here or not? Can I take a vote on the continuance?
Oh, you guys don't get to get this stuff.
All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Antonellis.
Yeah, I'll write on the left.
Moving right along.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Antonellis. We have an amended site plan for 154, 160 East Main Street. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to allow for the change of use on the subject property. Specifically, the proposal is to operate a new car dealership on the site. There are no additions being proposed to the existing building. There will be no conflict with access, parking, or circulation on the site. The existing landscape buffer is to be continued across the front of Lot 35. So the only access to East Main Street will be existing driveway lot on Lot 37. All applicable zoning requirements appear to be met. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Highway Department, just to remind you about the curb cutting permits. The Fire Department reviewed the amended site plan and has no comments. The Water Department has no conflicts. Mr. Dean?
Mike? Yeah, my report just references closing the two curb cuts along Route 16, which is an improvement. So that area, closing up those existing curb cuts. They're maintaining the most recent improvements in landscaping that we just did for the gym that was in there. And they're proposing to extend the landscaping along Route 16 in the easterly direction. So those are the improvements. Other than that, there's minimal, very little being proposed on the site and essentially returning back to the car dealership. It's been there for quite some time.
And Mike, just for clarity. I'll get to that in a sec. The credit union that was once proposed and came in front of this board is no longer viable as I see that it's extending into that lot. And before you start, I also have a letter from a resident of 6 Prairie Street, Carol Hiller. And her concerns, as in a butter, is that she lives one lot over to the east of the location. Over the years, the businesses that were there, the light towers have been left on full brightness into the late night and some days into the wee hours of the morning, as have been done in other areas and that have residential dwellings close by. Having this dealership dim their tower lights at a reasonable hour nightly should serve their needs and ours. I would appreciate your consideration on this request. My bedroom and bathroom face that location. Lights have interfered with my sleeps, window shades are not. Anything on the plan for a privacy fence to the east back half of their lot, half at 162 East Main Street is zoned residential. That would be a welcome addition as well. Due to the predicted inclement weather, she could not be here tonight. Bob?
Okay. So this is the previous, used to be the Chevy dealership.
It was Imperial Chevy.
It was Imperial Chevy, Imperial Chevy. I was even going to try to go back farther.
Scott, do you want to go away?
So.
Almost eight o'clock, so don't go too far.
Okay. So we, we had a site, the last site plan that we did for this particular building was for the World Gym. They didn't last too long there, so we're current, now we're going to be proposing to use the entire properties that is under the same ownership as another car dealership. It's going to be a Hyundai dealership. The building is going to relatively stay the same except for a new facade and a new ramp for, for parking, handicap ramp in the front. The stripe, the, look, the traffic flow and the striping is going to be somewhat altered and we're going to add some interior islands, which there are none now, to protect the light poles that are going to be proposed. All the light poles are going to be replaced with new poles with LEDs that focus downward and not just all around. So, so everything will be focused down and not, it'd be kind of, create as much of a dark sky situation as we possibly can.
Is it a fair statement to conclude that your lighting is going to pretty much stay committed to?
Within the site.
Within your site.
That's correct, yes. Yes, that's the intent. As was mentioned by Mike, the, these areas that you see here are existing landscape. Well, they only, it came up to here. The existing landscaping that was done by World Gym basically was just putting in some bituminous curbing and then putting some black mulch. That's pretty much all they did. We're proposing to extend it in front of the additional lot that's going to be used for vehicle storage. And then also add to that with the plantings similar to, I don't know if you've gone by the dealerships in Menden, but that's pretty much the landscaping that's going to be done. It's the same thing in front, grouping of plantings and trees and, you know, shrubs and grass. More than likely, you know, there'll be more grass and there will be this black mulch, you know, in that area. That's pretty much it. Just going to be another car dealership. Got 100 spaces for customers and employees and cars that are being serviced. We've got 203 spaces for vehicle storage currently. And everything, we meet all the requirements. We've closed, we've, we've still got this small entrance here. This is a one-way entrance coming in and around. This is a two-way entrance, the existing entrance. And all the additional curb cuts along East Main Street are going to be closed up so that there's just this one, one curb cut on East Main Street.
And it's a Class 1, so they didn't need special permit.
No. I'll open up to the board. Members?
No plans on using the lot across the street for storage?
A lot across the street, we're here? No. That's got other plans.
Maybe, maybe not, but.
Well, yeah, but, you know, currently there's no plans for that.
Yeah, the shanty itself.
And the, I can't see, I guess it was two things. The dumpster, I assume, in the back is shown as being fenced?
Yes.
I can't, couldn't really tell on the plan. And the sign location? I can't see it anywhere on here in the plan we have.
There are currently, there are currently several signs along the front. I don't know if we've decided which one, you decide which one they're going to pick.
Yeah, John, now with the meeting group? Sign location is going to be right in this island, right here. And they probably have one smaller sign in this island right here.
They're existing signs.
Yeah, there are existing signs, but they're not going to be in the same exact spot as they are.
Yeah, I don't think those signs really could be considered signs anymore. They're, they're, they're gone. So they've lost their, yeah, they've lost their.
Little triangle or rectangle around.
Yeah, I want to make sure that, I want to make sure the site meets the sign by law as, as now constituted, not the old.
One, one freestanding sign per dwelling. Per lot, per site, so.
Well, he may, yeah.
Check with, check with John.
Well, that's why I, I think we need to, we need to show, yeah. We need to show the sign location.
This is one lot and this is two lots. So you could have a sign on here and here and another one here. Because there are three, there are three, technically there are three lots. So we will make sure that we comply with the sign regulations.
Go ahead. Any other questions? Can you show me one more time? Where's the front entrance? Because I see the handicap, Rob.
It's on the side.
The front entrance is, the front entrance is right, is right here.
That's the, you're just, the entrance into the building is on the side, is it not, Bob?
There is an entrance here, but there.
I'm just concerned why the.
But that is also, you know.
I guess I'm just concerned why the handicap parking is way over there if the entrance is over here. That's what I'm just slightly confused about.
Yeah, the ramp.
That's your only handicap entrance.
The front of the building.
Yeah, but I see the ramp here.
Right there.
But I see the parking over here.
That's.
Well, why wouldn't you have the parking here for the handicap?
Didn't want to do it.
That seems confusing to me. I'm just confused if the handicap ramp's right here and your entrance is right here, why would?
So these, these are nine display spaces that are only.
I tried to print paper and my law was in a damn thing, so I couldn't have time to do it. Otherwise you could see it, otherwise it comes up as yellow.
So the customer parking is here.
Basically.
Here. So I put them as close as I could because the ramp is right here, so the handicap parking is here, up the ramp.
It's not where the door is, where the ramp is.
So it's close, it's close to the ramp where, where the parking is shown.
Can I back up?
These are display spaces. He's on full 18.
Hold on one second. Can I just ask a really foolish question? And I'm going to go back to when it was a Chevy dealership. And I'm just, I struggle slightly. I understand what you just said, but what happens if arbitrarily you would eliminate this right here and have your six car displays over here and then re-still or restore and have handicap over here?
Because we closed all of the curb cuts on.
Yeah, but it's not really, it's more of a display. I don't consider that, I, I understand what you're saying, but I also, we have to sometimes look back at the way it was before. I just would rather, I think, see the handicap closer to the front. And if you wanted to put display cards over here, I mean, I don't see that as a huge issue. That's just me.
It's the same, it's the same distance.
What, having a display area here and having a handicap here?
This is, this is the same distance. If you park, if you park here, you put a handicap here, this guy has to go down here, around and in to get up this ramp. He's not, he's not entering this way. I believe the way he's doing this is he's ramping up along his face. So you have to go all the way around.
Oh, okay.
No, that's, no. So, so he's, that's the entrance. So that distance from those two is about the same.
So then that is the closest area.
So I don't.
I thought it was more flush.
No, I think he's ramping up in the front face.
So then, all right.
That distance actually helps with the, with, to make, to make the grade.
In my mind, I thought it was more flush, but I don't.
Yeah, no, it's always, there's always a step up over there.
Again, I don't hang out down there.
Yeah, because he'd need, if he did it that way and ramped up, he'd need a level area in front of the door. Couldn't do that.
Any other questions from the board? Pleasure of the board.
Recommend we approve the amended site plans subject to the location of the signs on it.
Motion by Joe for approval of the site plan subject to the sign location delineation, seconded by Babe. Any further questions? Bearing not? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous?
We've got a plan we're going to do and put the signs on it anyway. Before he signs.
Well, they have to.
Yeah, they have to show the sign, otherwise they couldn't put a sign.
Nothing but time for you. Nothing but time. All right. That's why I tape it. Possible zoning by law amendments. Larry?
The first one was the retail marijuana establishments that we talked about the last time. I just put it back on the agenda in case anybody had any other input. We really haven't heard a whole lot from the selectmen in terms of when they wanted to go with it, so I'm assuming we will. But whether you do or not, the board could always make a decision as to how you want to handle it. My suggestion was just you do it exactly the same way they did for the.
Good night.
For the medical marijuana treatment centers as far as being in the IB and the IC zone. And it refers to footnote 23, which had the 200-foot separation requirement in it. There's obviously been discussion from a variety of people about whether or not that's too restrictive. My concern would be opening up to too many of the other commercial zones, especially the downtown area. But nonetheless, I think there are a number of retail sites in the IB and the IC zones in town so that you could in theory have a number of these marijuana establishments located.
I think the other quick question, Larry, is in terms of, if you want to also talk about the potential number of allowable locations that there possibly be.
Well, that would be more of a licensing situation. At this, at this stage, this is just.
Well, no, but, but we, obviously, we as a planning board can make a stipulation that you don't want any distribution facilities as well, and that's legal. distribution facilities as well, and that's legal, so I'm just, I, I, I think as part of this, I'd like to at some point have some sort of discussion in terms of the number. That's just me.
I believe the selectmen are looking at that, but I think, discussion that we had last, last meeting.
And I wasn't privy.
Right, so to, to go through, Larry had done, had gone through this. I, I'm not sure if any other members of the board had, had significant concerns with it in that, to me, the people of the town voted for it. I don't think the expectation was that they were gonna be limited to the IB and IC zones. You know, I would, I thought, and certainly not that I'm in favor of this, but unfortunately or fortunately for some people, I guess, it's now law. And my thought process is, these people expect to be able to go shopping like they do for alcohol, to go smoking, to go shopping for marijuana. And it's me, I, I was to the extent of, I felt, and this is how it got into this conversation, of the, the, the commercial zones should be allowed, at least to the extent of if we wanted to, to monitor it, and at least allow it per special permit. You know, not, not as an allowed use, but at least be allowed per special permit, at the least. The numbers, we discussed this, I mean, I think the way the, the regulation is written right now is the town has the right to disperse the number that we also have per liquor license, not, not by extra ones that we, but based on the population.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's.
If there was twelve, and again, I don't know the number, but.
But that's separate from zoning.
That, that, right, that's not, non-zoning issue.
No, but when you talk about zoning, and I understand your expectation that that's the law, and people have perhaps had some sort of expectation of where they could perhaps buy it from, but obviously they can also grow it for their own consumption at their own home. But I just, I'd like to be careful with this, because I don't have the expectation that there should be twenty of these on every street corner. That's just me. So if the question is, if the question is regardless of its legality, if the question is, do I wanna see this widespread like I see liquor stores? No, I don't, and maybe I'm being selfish, but that's not really in my mind what I thought that this should look like. So if that's the question, then to me, I'd rather do nothing and wait and see what other communities do. And for once, let us play catch-up rather than be forefront. That's just me.
Well, I, I think, and we probably should find out how many, but I think we're talking maybe seven or eight total.
That's excessive.
Well, I think we need to know that, that number would be good, but I believe the selectmen are looking at, should we go to town meeting and limit that to less than that number? As a separate, as a separate thing. And certainly, this doesn't have to be done for this town meeting based on our understanding that, you know, we've got probably two more town meetings before it's legal to sell marijuana.
But it would be helpful, I would think, to the town to try and get our heads around it somehow. To have some regulations on the books sooner rather than later. And then if it becomes evident that it's too restrictive, go back and amend it. But I think that would protect the town better than to not do anything, because that would raise the question as to if in fact you wouldn't just be able to go where any retail store could go right now. So I think you wanna avoid that situation. But to the point of how the zoning part of it would work, cause I think, I think with licensing covering the number and they're coming at it in a different way that they're allowed to under licensing, that would be kind of difficult to do directly with zoning. When you start going beyond the IB and the IC zone, you need to look at the shape of those zones on the zoning map and see just how skinny those ribbons of commercial strip zoning look on the map. And some of the zones are only two-hundred-foot wide themselves, which is the separation requirement from residential districts. So, you know, if you adopt, if you keep a reference to the footnote, which has the separation in it, then you've made it it's a moot point to list CA, CB, and CC zones, because they would all be blown out by the separation. So the more zoning districts you wanna allow it in, then the further away you get from talking about a separation distance at all, which is fine. I'm just saying the structure of, of what's here, that would need to be changed too. So you wouldn't have any separation from residential zoning districts, but you may still wanna have the separation from all the specific uses, like a residence or a church.
Yeah, that may, that may or may not be true, depending on where the site is. I mean, in general, that's probably true with those zones. There may be, and that's up to the, that's up to the proponent to find if he wants to do one in those zones. I don't know that I would, I don't know that I would take those separations away. I mean, if you wanted to locate it downtown and find a spot that meets the requirement.
But there may not be any in these zones, that's what.
There may or there may not. I don't know that, and I don't know that you know about it now, I guess, and I'm not sure that. I'm not sure how critical it is in that, I'm trying to make this available to people to go out and look on their own to see if they meet them.
Well, but if, why would we adopt a zoning by law that encourages people to look for something that's an impossibility? There's no use to do that. Now, if we change the separation to either no separation or fifty feet or a hundred feet, now you're, you're actually potentially at least able to find something in some of these other zones. That was my concern about keeping the structure the way it is. You know, we can come up with some other separation. It doesn't have to be the same as it is for the medical marijuana treatment center. I just use that because we had already adopted that structure and it works. And, and we can not worry about the number, not that we shouldn't care about it, but as a planning board, you don't need to worry about the number. Because the selectmen are gonna determine that through licensing, and you'll still have the site-by-site review by the ZBA granting a special permit.
Well, does, does that, I'm thinking in my own head where they are, does that mean that, that at least half of the existing liquor stores are existing non-conforming usage?
Well, if, if the liquor stores, if you were to convert every liquor store to a marijuana establishment. You know, assuming somebody wanted to make the liquor stores a marijuana establishment, hardly any of them would meet the criteria that we're talking about now in those other zones.
That's what I'm saying.
Because of the separations.
Right.
And the proximity to, to a residence, whether it's in a residential zone or not, so.
Oh, you're talking, you're not talking, liquor stores don't have the same.
And they don't have these at all.
They don't have those.
They're retail use.
They're retail.
And they're heavily regulated through licensing.
Well, but, but aren't these gonna be, again, I keep going back to, I don't know why we're considering now marijuana any different than alcohol.
Well, is, the, the impression I got was that it was probably going to be a concern and we should start figuring it out. So, so I offered this as, as a way to get our heads around it and move forward. If the preference of the board is to regulate it the same way, then we'll provide for that. We'll provide for it as a use in the use chart, so it shows up as retail use.
And it's, in its simplest form, and again, this isn't something I have any idea why this went this way, but it did. And, and people have spoken, should we say, and, and certainly in its simplest form, my, my thought process is people would think they can buy this exactly like they can buy alcohol, exactly the same. And now we're saying, no, we wanna, we wanna regulate it differently. I wanted to regulate it totally, but I, that, that wasn't the way it went. I, I believe that's what people were saying in, in, in going down to the simplest form, so like it or not, to me.
So you're fine with just having it dispensed in theory on Main Street?
Yeah. It's, 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 it's gonna be regulated the same as alcohol is. I'm not sure why it would be regulated any differently at this point, once, once.
If that's the case, then you don't need zoning. You don't need an amendment.
Well, you need to clarify what it is.
Still need an amendment.
Cause of the way we defined it.
It's no different than a retail application. It really isn't. The way you described it, it's a retail application. I don't need to change anything.
Somebody can open up, rent out a piece of a building.
We would have to define it in the bylaw as, yeah, it is a retail, but I think.
That's all it is. You're not a grower, you're a retailer.
Yeah.
So why do we need to, we don't need to do anything. If that, what you're saying is true, then you don't need to do anything. It's no different than, than selling lifesavers.
Which was actually one of the concerns, that if you don't do anything, it's just allowed wherever.
I'm just confused. If Joe's, if Joe's image is, it, it needs no regulation because it's already regulated somehow by the state, then in a true sense, all it is is a retail application. It's no different than a convenience store selling cigarettes, bread, wine, beer. It's no different.
Well, it's no different than an alcoholic establishment.
But it's no different, then, then you don't need, you don't need zoning change.
The only restriction there should be as far as schools.
Churches.
Okay, okay, that, that's fine. You can make that, but you don't.
If you do it by a church, you couldn't sell it anywhere in this town.
Certainly not uptown.
But I, I agree, I agree with Joe, and by putting it in IB and IC, you're restricting it so they can't do it. Because somebody who's gonna be selling something in a retail, a retail operation cannot afford to go.
IB.
IB.
All right. And I don't know if you're gonna find a small enough area for them to principally be able to pay rent.
In the two-hundred-foot of residents, you could, we couldn't even do it for the regular, for the medical marijuana.
So the question then comes to life, if it's retail, why do you need to regulate it, other than perhaps the caveat? If you want to distinguish between churches, daycare, schools, and things of that. Other than that, what else would you need to do?
The only thing.
I'm just, I'm just trying to play catch-up, cause I wasn't here.
But that would be a way to get at it, is with the.
I think we need to, what we need to determine is what we classify this as. If you classify it as nothing more than retail, then you have your answer.
But you need to do an amendment that clarifies that because of the existence of the medical marijuana treatment center.
You gotta create, you gotta create a use.
So the definition would say that marijuana establishments.
Is it an establishment or is it a retail item?
No, by state, by definition, it's a marijuana establishment.
Yeah, I think they have to be separately, so it is a, it is a distinct.
But they don't, they don't grow, they just.
Right, yes.
Again, it's like sending, well, I'm confused. Are they growing or are they not?
Yes, yes, they can.
They can.
Well, now you could, now you distinguish.
Wait a minute now.
Yeah, all right, well, then now, so hold on, so now it's a commercial use. So if it's a commercial use, then in theory, but again, I'm trying to, I wasn't here last meeting, so.
But that's the definition that I had the last time, it's the same definition this time. It says it's right out of state statute. It's the most inclusive term as far as the definition goes. It says marijuana establishments includes a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, product manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other marijuana-related business, but not to include a medical marijuana treatment center. So we would add to that definition that for this bylaw, it's considered a retail use.
Right.
Provided it's located at least X number of feet from blah, 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 blah. And you don't get into any of the rest of this stuff, because the chart already tells you where the retail uses are allowed. The only other thing you might do is add marijuana establishments via this definition to the chart of commercial uses.
So it's a commercial use, it's not a retail.
So what, what I think I was saying, what I think other people were saying is, as a retail use, which is only a portion of what you can do. As a retail use, the expectation is that you could be anywhere. I don't think I want to allow them growing for, for distribution in a retail area. So I think that's where we, so that gets into the definition.
Okay, I was just looking for clarity, cause I was awfully confused with the way we were doing it.
The cultivating is a biz, is a commercial.
Absolutely commercial use.
It's not a residential, it's a commercial use. That should be in the IB, IC, IC zone. But the retail sales, the, the simple retail sales.
Which I think some people will do, just, you know, just doing that, and they buy it off of somebody and sell it.
Right.
To me, I would, you know, I, I think the expectation is that that type of establishment would be in the retail zones.
In theory, you have to actually come up with two separate.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Now you're really complicating it, so.
Well, I think you have to. That's the expectation.
It's not a simple thing, I mean.
Well, but I think some of the, the space availability is gonna determine whether or not they're growing anything on premises or not. And, and the more likely places where the sites are big enough are in these other zones anyhow, not in, not in the.
Listen to the news, Holyoke's gonna grow it all.
Who is?
Holyoke. If you listen to the news.
I mean.
I'm not being fresh, I'm just being honest.
And there's places in Colorado where I don't believe they're doing any growing. They're doing strictly retail, there's, you know, there's a.
Oh, right.
Reminding me of going to Sweet's pharmacy and there's a counter with a, with a bunch of mari, different types of marijuana in the window. They're all, they all come from different places, and, you know, that's all they're selling, and there's nothing out back, that's it. It's just straight retail. And if that's what comes here, then to me, that should be the same as if you went down and got a six-pack somewhere.
Okay, so I think you have to come up with two.
Way to do that without overly complicating it, given the way the definition's already written, so I'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Can we break down the definition?
Well, either that or just leave it the way it is and.
You have to add, you have to add retail.
Because one of the uses is marijuana retailer. So in your use chart, under commercial uses, if that's how you wanna handle it.
I don't know, we're just discussing.
Marijuana.
Well, if you, if you did it, if you did it and you did it by special permit, we could, the board would have the discretion to limit it at that point. Someone came in and said they wanted to grow it in those, we wouldn't have to give them a special permit if you wanted to do it that way.
Well, but you also.
I know that you want to do it that way, but you could.
So you're saying you'd rather have the planning board be the special permit granting authority than the.
Well, I think when it comes to retail application, I think Joe's point, when you're coming, when you're talking about a commercial application where you're growing it and perhaps distributing it, that's different. I think the way it's written previously or presently is accurate. But when you talk about solely the retail application without growing, that's where the, there's a slight complication.
Okay.
Let's move on. Get a gun for dogs.
I named dogs.
Oh, it's chickens?
Yadburts.
Jeez, I missed the last one.
You did miss it.
My suggestion the last time was to prohibit it altogether in the RA zone because of lots, residential animals.
I don't think a chicken's a residential animal.
Well, they are by definition.
Okay, let's eliminate it.
So you, without changing the definition of what constitutes a residential animal, you just go to the chart and say, you can't have them in the RA zone anymore.
That's a wonderful idea.
Cause those are the areas where the most problems are.
Densely populated. I, I think, I don't think that they certainly, you know, benefit.
I agree, they are densely populated.
In such an area. I think it's a plight to the community.
Make progress on one thing.
Specifically to the neighbors.
Yes.
Possibly. I don't know how many eggs you could possibly consume in a day that you did so many chickens. Any other business? I didn't know that. Any other business? Take a motion from Babe, second from Lena to adjourn. Thank you, and have a good night.